God Almighty be the glory and all aberration now and forevermore. It is a great privilege to be among the living being this morning. Be the first Sunday in the month of August. I say happy new month to every one of us, happy Sunday and good morning. If Jesus Christ leads, we will celebrate month of Sundays in the mighty name of Jesus. As this month has been declared that it shall be our month of visitation for restoration, so shall it be for you. Your life will experience a great visitation for restoration in the day of this month in the mighty name of Jesus. Welcome to the month of August, happy Sunday and good morning, God bless you. To all our active subscribers, I say welcome back. To all our newly subscribers, if you are just joining this channel, we say welcome to this beautiful channel, your hidden purpose for joining will be made manifest. And to everyone of us on this kingdom race, the Lord help us to end well in the mighty name of Jesus. May our walk here on earth, serving God, we must be in pain in the mighty name of Jesus. God bless every one of you in the mighty name of Jesus. This is hidden from the world, the spiritual way to grow. Under the canopy of hidden from the world, we bring to you a study section with David I Jewely. And here we have to feed from the world this morning. God bless you in the mighty name of Jesus. For our prayer today this morning, as we launch into the world, may you establish your word in us in the mighty name of Jesus. Give us the grace to understand your word. What do you want us to know? May you bring your word to our understanding in the mighty name of Jesus. In grace to be the ruler of the world and a justice speaker or listener for him, he is resting upon our life in the mighty name of Jesus. At the end of today's section, let's all go to the beloved who. Thank you King of Kings for in Jesus mighty name of bread. Amen. God bless everyone of you once again in the morning. The topic before me this morning says meeting points. Meeting points. I'm very sure every one of us listening to me this morning has so very compassioned this word. Meeting point, meeting point. Whenever we are talking about meeting point, it's a place where two things meet. A place where two things meet. A person cannot just make a meeting point, it is not possible. A person cannot make a meeting point. A thing cannot make a meeting point. Whenever we are talking about meeting point, it's the connection between two things. The point they meet, that is what meeting point simply means. Meeting point, a place of connection. Meeting point, a place of connection. I pray for you this morning, that a connection you've been waiting for all this while, the Lord Almighty will commend it happening this morning in the mighty name of Jesus. A place of connection. The divine connection you've been waiting for all this while, we locate you today in the mighty name of Jesus. Meeting point is a place of connection. There are a lot of things that is keeping us on the spot because we are yet to meet the person that will take us out from that point of position to meet ourselves. Everybody on earth needs connection. And before connection can take place, we must meet at a particular place before connection can take place. Meeting point, a place of connection. A meeting point is a designated place, is a designated location where individual or group gather to connect, share and achieve common goals. It can be physical space such as conference room, park or cafe, or a virtual platform like how you are listening to me on your phone right now, like online meeting tools or social media group. They are the ways we can meet ourselves now. Either we are meeting physically or we are meeting virtually. Virtually means meeting ourselves on all these social media platform, putting on a conference call, meeting ourselves online either Instagram, Facebook, WhatsApp or any other platform. The same way you are listening to me on YouTube this morning, watching me directly. The same way you are listening to my voice on Audiuma or MeetSailor and Spotify. Is a place where two things meet. A meeting point is a designated location, a designated place where individual or group gather to connect. Where group gather to connect, a place where you connect yourself. A place where there is connection and you share, you are going to share something. There is no how someone will meet me or I'm meeting someone now and we're going to start something, maybe there is a benefit from me to the person and there is also a benefit from the person to me. We meet at a place, we are going to share something. What are we sharing? We are sharing our contact. We are going to exchange contact because we want to achieve a common goal. The goal we are to achieve is the benefit he has to offer me and the benefit I have to offer the person I'm meeting. We are going to exchange number, we share our number to achieve a common goal. But there is a point that you and whatever we want to be called must meet. Connection don't just take place, connection must take place with you meeting someone first. And I can pray for you if you believe in me this morning, the long awaited connection you've been waiting for that has kept you on that point and that junction for a long period of time. That the Lord Almighty will commend the location on your behalf in the mighty name of Jesus. You will meet your destiny helper in the mighty name of Jesus. You will meet your career helper in the mighty name of Jesus. You will meet your business helper in the mighty name of Jesus. You need someone to become somebody and you need someone to become somebody. There is a point where both of you must meet. I pray the almighty God who blesses world in the mighty name of Jesus. Let us open our Bible to the book of Hebrew 10 verse 25. Hebrew 10 verse 25, it says, "And let us not neglect our meeting together as much people do, but encourage one another, especially now that the day of his return is drawing near." "And let us not neglect our meeting together as some people do, but encourage one another, especially now that the day of his return is drawing near." I would love to take these Bible verses once again for better understanding. Hebrew 10 verse 25. "And let us not neglect our meeting together as some people do, but encourage one another, especially now that the day of his return is drawing near." This Bible passage is making us understand that we need each other to become somebody. This life, as I always say, is a chain. The same way you need me, someone else need you. We all need each other to become someone in life. But it's so very unfortunate this day that you see that it is very difficult for people to help due to the past experience they have, due to one scenario that they are devout. It's so very difficult for them to be of help, but this life is a chain. You don't know, maybe you helping me is me standing on my feet to help your child. Everybody cannot stand at the same time. We all need one person to make us stand. And immediately we are standing, a lot of people are looking up to us to also stand. Then how are we going to achieve this? How are we going to achieve this if we are not meeting together to be of help to each other? As so many people do, many people have neglected meeting each other to achieve anything. They think they can all achieve things their own and they can achieve things on their own. But encourage one another, especially this time that the returning of Jesus Christ is drawing near. The returning of Jesus Christ is drawing near. Also, you can check the book of Acts 2 verse 1 to 4, Hebrew 4 verse 16, Proverbs 22 verse 7 and Proverbs 22 verse 2. I will come back to that Bible verse. Importance of meeting points. Importance of meeting point. Meeting point facilitates, one, communication. Meeting point facilitate communication. If you meet someone today, he's going to start a communication between you and the person. But someone you never meet, it is very difficult to start conversation, to start communication with the person. Meeting I'm talking about, you can meet someone online, you can meet someone physically. But you meeting someone online is someone introducing someone to you. Maybe now I want to get something done. And I was like, okay, can you help me with this person's number? And they forward the number to me because of what I need from the person and we are meeting already. We are meeting already. Communication is first thing that will happen. The importance of meeting point is communication. Face to face of virtual interaction, understanding and collaboration. Face to face of virtual interaction, understanding and collaboration. This is what meeting point facilitates. Number two, community building. Community building. Shared experience and interact create bond among each other. Share experiences, sharing experience and interaction and interest create bond among each other. There is no how you have something to deliver, I have something to deliver. We are sharing our experience, it will create more bond. It will create more bond. I can't just meet someone on the road and start sharing my experience with the person. I can only share my experience because you subscribe to my channel. I can only share my experience because you subscribe to my channel. You know the time we are after this program, every Sunday. You know the time I will come up on YouTube, on TikTok, on this. If I share any experience, you will understand. But I can't just be going on the roadside and be sharing my experience. People will think I am mad. Meeting point creates a community building. A community building, you share your experience with one another. Number three, problem solving. A meeting will always make you solve problem. Whenever you meet at a meeting point, you know yourself. There is difference between you knowing someone one on one and there's different you knowing someone just by name or just by name. Yes, there are some people that I know by name and I know by look, but we've never met one on one. But the day we meet is going to start something different beyond just knowing them by name or beyond just knowing them by name. I can actually take problem to them because I know them. We've once met together, then it has started something between us. Meeting point, it is very, very important to meet someone your life need. It is very important to solve a lot of problems for you. Collective brainstorming and discussion leads to innovation solution. Collective brainstorming and discussion leads to innovative solution. Whenever there is problem, you know there is this anecdote says two heads are better than one. Two heads are better than one. Sometimes you are going to be battling with some problem that will brainstorming and disturbing your head. Discussion that you cannot just discuss with just another person, not until you see someone that is in line with what you want to discuss. So ask for the problem to have what solution. We meet people to solve solution. And the last one, number four says, we meet people for networking. Networking, that is what I will lay more emphasis on now. This era we have is about networking. You must make sure you are meeting people left, right, center. Make sure you are meeting people, make new friends wherever you meet yourself. Meeting point provide opportunities to connect with like minded individual or potential partner. Meeting point provide opportunities to connect with like minded people. You are going to connect with minded individuals and potential partner. People can do this together, but not until you start meeting people, that is when you will start growing. Meet people, meet people that will influence your life positively. People that will help you, people that will use you all because you cannot stand alone, you need the help of people around you. And I pray the almighty God who bless you in the mighty name of Jesus. Before moving forward this morning, I want to go back to the book of that Proverbs 22 verse 2 and the book of Proverbs 22 verse 7. Proverbs 22 verse 2 and Proverbs 22 verse 7. Proverbs 22 verse 2 is talking about the meeting of the poor and the rich. Let me read from here. Proverbs 22 verse 2 says, "Rich and the poor have in common, the Lord is the maker of them all." The rich and the poor meet, the Lord is the maker of them all. But verse 7 says, the rich rule over the poor and the poor are the servants to the lander." Well, this Bible passage is trying to make us understand that there is a meeting point where the poor and the rich meet together. But when it actually gets to verse 7, it makes us understand that the rich rule it over the poor. That means if the rich is not helping the poor, the poor will remain poor. But if the rich can help the poor, the poor can be rich. And if the poor influence the rich, the poor can also make the rich poor if care is not taken. In the process of meeting together, two things are at stake. It's either the poor overshadow the rich or the rich overshadow the poor. That is simple as that. I will take this illustration of good and bad. There is a point where the good and the bad they meet. That is why anything that is bad for them to be good, they have an encounter with something good. And for what is good to the bad, they have an encounter with something bad. So there is a point where the good and the bad meet. It's not left to the one that has power to overshadow one another. There is no new person you will meet today and will not have a positive effect on your life. And there is no body that you will meet today and will not have impact in your life. It is either you overshadow those people or they overshadow you. That is why when you are working with some set of people, if care is not taken, they will influence you toward the ones. And if you are working with some set of people of positivity, they will influence you to become someone positive outward. And when you are meeting people, make sure you are sure of people you are meeting this morning. I pray the almighty God who blesses world in the mighty name of Jesus. And this is type of meeting point. Type of meeting point. Number one, physical space. Physical space, office, co-working space, community center, church, club, hotel, bar, school or outside place or outdoor place. I will make you understand this morning that there is no way you cannot meet people. And don't ever think that where you meet someone justify the type of the person you are meeting. No, you can meet people or you can meet someone at anywhere. But don't let where you meet the person justify who the person is to you. There are a lot of people that are going to meet at church. Meeting at church doesn't justify you are meeting only people. I will tell you the blood truth. Meeting people in the church doesn't justify you are not meeting with someone that will do you. Meeting in church doesn't justify you will not meet a man as a lady that will break your heart. Meeting someone they just doesn't justify you have meet the D D like the only people in the world. And meeting people in bar, in hotel, in club doesn't justify they are the worst time. Please be sensitive to this. Meeting people where you met them doesn't justify who they are. Who they are is inside of them. Where you meet them should not justify you qualifying them to be where you meet them this morning. Physical space, you can meet people physically in the office, co-working space, community center, church, club, hotel, bar, school or outdoor space. And number two, virtual platform. Virtual platform. I'm very sure this era is more of virtual now, more virtual. There is video conferencing tools, online platform and social media platform. There is video conferencing tools, online forum. You can meet people on online forum. You can just go, hear someone's name, search for the name and just meet people like that. And you can meet people on social media platform. Social media platform coming down to your WhatsApp, your TikTok, your Instagram, Telegram. You can meet people through that place. You can meet people on anywhere called online, virtual platform. And the last one under that says, event base. Event base. Either conference, workshop or meet points or meetup points. Conference, workshop or meetup point. What I'm talking about is like going on event to meet someone. Like you are for your conference and you meet someone, workshop, you meet someone, wedding, you meet someone. Like something you doesn't, you did not even plan, something you did not plan. That one is kind of relating to physical meeting, physical space or event base. I pray the almighty God who interprets this word to us in the mighty name of Jesus. And lastly, before I go this morning, this is benefit of meeting point. Benefit of meeting point. Number one, increased productivity, increased productivity. Focused discussion and collaborations leads to tangible outcome. Increase productivity. There is no how they are going to meet someone, maybe it's your destiny helper and there will not be increase in your productivity. Productivity in the sense that who you are as a person, not talk of your business or your job or your academics, who you are as a person, you will be productive yourself because focused discussion and collaboration with someone leads to tangible outcome. And number two, enhance creativity. Enhanced creativity. Sometimes you are creative yourself, but when your creativity meets someone that can design, it will establish your mindset of creativity. You want to create more, you want to touch your brain to be of a creative person more because there is someone designing your creativity. Oh my God, I pray the almighty God who interprets his words to us in the mighty name of Jesus. This means sharing a new innovations. Sharing new innovations, sharing new perspective. Yes, you be sharing perspective with each other to enhance your creativity. And the last one under that, it says, improve relationship. Improve relationship, regular meeting help trust and understanding. Regular meetings help trust and understanding, improve relationship. There is no how if you have a relationship with someone that you just meet and they will not be regular meeting to help you trust each other and understand yourself more. I pray the almighty God who blesses world in the mighty name of Jesus. I pray the almighty God who blesses world in the mighty name of Jesus. The book of John 14 verse 6 says, "Jesus said unto him, I am the way, the truth and the life; no man comment unto the Father but by me." "Jesus said unto him, I am the way, the truth and the life; no man comment unto the Father but by me." What we are trying to say here right now is that you must meet Jesus Christ before you can inherit the kingdom of God. And that is where I am going this morning. You must meet Jesus Christ before you can inherit the kingdom of God. "I am the way, the truth and the life." The way, the truth and the life, these are all things you need. You need to know the way, you need to know the truth and you need to know life itself. But no man comment to the Father except by me. To get to the Father is to follow the link of Jesus Christ. And to follow the link is to meet Jesus Christ. You'll be hearing about Jesus Christ countless times and you are still listening to me, hearing about Jesus Christ this morning. The way we are getting full of meeting Jesus Christ. I can boldly tell you that the day you meet Jesus Christ is the day you have peace. The day you meet and have encounter with Jesus Christ is the day you are free. Is the day you have peace of mind. And you always say that life is simple, we are the one making it complex. And people making it complex are not ready to make it simple. But the day you have Jesus Christ is the day you are going to see life and the world in another way. I hope you this morning, no matter the meeting that will profit you here on earth, have an encounter and meet Jesus Christ today. That is the greatest meeting that you must make happen before you die, before you rest, that is the great meeting you must make happen. Meet Jesus Christ. Meet Jesus Christ today. Give your life to Jesus. Yes, say no to the world and come to Jesus. The Jesus Christ will help you to inherit the kingdom of God. As I do say, not everyone will inherit the kingdom of God. Not everyone will enter the kingdom of God. But those who have followed the way through him, through Jesus Christ are beneficiary of the kingdom of God. I pray the almighty God who blesses world in the mighty name of Jesus. I would have loved to share his story with us, but because of our time, we are running out of time already. But please, you can meet Jesus at anywhere, not in the kitchen church alone. You can meet Jesus at anywhere, not church alone. So please and please, if you are still waiting for that day that you will enter in church and they will now call you out, that you should give your life to Jesus. You are playing, you are playing, don't deceive yourself. They are in love with our evangelists, they're like the lights of people to people outside here. What I'm doing here is showcasing Jesus Christ to you for you to have an encounter with him. And before I close today, I will say one with you that we can just say to show and to let God know that you've given your life to him. Because what profit a man who gave others all and loses his life? You must meet with Jesus today. The scripture says, "That seek ye first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and orders will be added to it." For it's so unfortunate that this era, we are focusing on that orders that he wants to us do it. And we think that the Lord Almighty will now add. And we think that the Lord Almighty will not add the kingdom of God to it. When it says that seeking first the kingdom of God and we are seeking the orders first. Then how are we going to achieve this? Please, I am begging you, come back to Jesus this morning. You have not given your life to Jesus, say after me this morning that Lord Jesus. I accept you as my Lord, as my Savior and support. I live this sinful world and I give my life to you because you are my Lord. You are the way to Father, you are the way to internalize. I boldly say to you that you are my Lord and my Savior. Forgive me all my sins, I am ready to take the responsibility and the task it is. For me to inherit the kingdom of God. Be my Father, be my Savior, guide me and support in the mighty name of Jesus. For in Jesus mighty name of prayer. And before I go this morning, this is. Meeting points are essential for building connection. Meeting point are essential for building connection, collaboration and achieving common goals. By leveraging physical and virtual space. Individuals and groups can come together to share ideas, solve problem and grow together. Meeting points are essential for building connections, collaboration and achieving common goals. By leveraging physical and virtual space. Individuals and groups can come together to share ideas, solve problem and grow together. Please, let us come together to share ideas, solve problems and grow together. And with the help of God, we can do this. So come to Jesus, let Jesus solve your problem and let Jesus be to grow. This morning, I pray the Almighty God bless you in the mighty name of Jesus. Note this before I call it eating. It says, don't think you are the best. There is a point where both the good and the bad meet. Don't think you are the best, there is that one point that the good and the bad meet. Don't think you are the best, yes, don't think you are perfect. You can meet anybody at anywhere. At anywhere, there is a point where the good and the bad meet. And I pray the Almighty God who blesses world in the mighty name of Jesus. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the grace, for the privilege for receiving you. We thank you for this word you sent to us. We thank you, we meet our life at a point of meets. We thank you, you are going to be our Father, you are going to perfect everything because of us. For our Lord, we pray to you this one degrees to meet you. At that junction we need you, this release upon our life in the mighty name of Jesus. You said you are the way, the truth and the life. No one comes to the Father except through you. The grace to follow your channel to the Father is released upon our life in the mighty name of Jesus. The divine connection you need and speak to your life. We see this right now in the mighty name of Jesus. That person you must meet for your turnaround, for transformation, go and meet them in the mighty name of Jesus. The grace of your Almighty God will depart from you. Peace be unto you in the mighty name of Jesus. For in Jesus mighty name of prayer. Amen. We have come to the end of this session. I want to use this medium to say thank you for everyone for joining, for watching and for listening. The Lord Almighty bless you in the mighty name of Jesus. Don't forget to share this particular video with someone. Let someone be a particular of today's message. And as you share, like and comment, the Lord Almighty will bless you in the mighty name of Jesus. This is written from the world. And under this, we bring to you this third session with David Adewale. That comes up every Sunday morning, 6:00 AM, Nigerian time. You can stream with us all over the world, you can connect with us via YouTube, Spotify, Amazon, Mixalay and Spotify. I will be glad when you inform someone to be a particular of this program next week, Sunday. This night, we will be having a program on TikTok Live, 8:00 PM Nigerian time, titled Set a Week. This is where we have an encounter with God of settlements. We have an encounter with God committing our week spiritually, ego and happy evidence. Physically, join us tonight and you will be blessed, live on TikTok, 8:00 PM Nigerian time. And don't forget our midweek prayer that comes up every Wednesday evening, 8:00 PM Nigerian time. You can join us on Facebook Live and Mixelar. So I pray as you join, the Lord Almighty will make it possible for you. The program is titled It Is Possible. This is where we have an encounter with God of possibility. Join us and let God make that in a sense impossible, possible in your life. 8:00 PM Nigerian time on Facebook Live and Mixelar this Wednesday. And I assure you as you join us, God will make that in a sense impossible, possible. God bless you in the mighty name of Jesus. Unto the hand of Almighty God, I commit to you, in the name of this week, it shall be a fulfilling week. And the Lord Almighty will uplift you in the mighty name of Jesus. Peace be unto you now and forevermore in the mighty name of Jesus. Stay my humble servant, David Adewale, to meet next week, Sunday. Good morning and God bless you.